Good evening, we're having a special meeting of Board of Selectmen in town of Halifax to interview candidates for Council on Aging Director. First thing on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, community and justice for all.
I must notify you too that Area 58 is showing this and will be seen on our regular public stations in the future. Evening.
Evening.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Why? Why? Why are you applying for the position?
Why am I applying for the position? Well, I've always wanted to get into the Council on Aging Director position, so I've applied for a few different ones. I've worked for the Council on Aging in Rochester, who guys are close to home. I've worked with seniors pretty much my whole life, so it's something that I've always wanted to do.
What would you consider your greatest achievements?
My greatest accomplishments? Um, I think, oh boy, that's tough. I've done a lot of good ones. Personal ones, like marathons that I run, like fives, but I've opened three 55-year-old or senior centers, so I think that's a pretty good accomplishment as well. I've helped open them with other professionals. So, Oak Point was one of them. I was the program director, unit coordinator there before it really opened to be the community it is today. So, I was there when we had ten homes and I left when it was over seven hundred homes. So, I was there before we had our big clubhouse and helped get all the programs up and going for that. And then in North Attleboro about two years ago, I helped open assisted living over there and I think that's a pretty good accomplishment as well. And they were so pleased with all the things that I had brought to that community and connecting the community. I won an award for the Massachusetts assisted living for the whole Massachusetts in 2018 for connecting communities. So, bringing a lot of volunteers to our assisted living community and then also bringing our seniors out into the community to volunteer as well. So, probably to open that community two years ago, they promoted me to Marlboro and helped them open this brand new community that we just opened two weeks ago.
How many years of experience have you had working with seniors?
With seniors, I have been in the world for twenty-something years. I graduated Bridgewater in ninety-five, Bridgewater State College, and I've been working since then. So, I started as a personal trainer and I never really gave up my personal training, but I went from there working as an assistant program director to a director and I've been working, you know, in this for eleven percent. So, I was in nursing homes, in independent living, and then assisted living. And also, I worked for the Rochester Council on Aging for a little while as well as a program director.
Now, did you have opportunity to order the building when you had much of your experience?
I did not, but I did get to look around a little bit, yeah. So, I know it's a small, little building.
What's your impression?
And whatnot. It's quaint, you know? It's quaint. I'm curious to hear what the thoughts are for the town and what they, you know, how people see, you know, what their future is for the senior center? Would they like to have it changed or are they happy with it the way it is, you know?
In the jobs that you've had, did you have a board of directors, supervisory body?
Not for the independent or nursing homes or assisted living, but definitely worked with the board at the Rochester Council on Aging, sure.
All right. Go ahead. This is a tough question. What do you feel should be the Council on Aging service priorities and concerns?
What are some of their priorities and concerns?
What should be your priorities? So, what would your priorities be? What types of things would you want to prioritize, I suppose is a better way to put it?
Um, really, like, whatever the seniors are looking for, I think that you have to kind of see what they're looking for. It is their senior center, so I think you have to ask the questions to the seniors. What do they want to see? What do they, you know, what would they like? I think purpose is a huge thing. I think a lot of folks, you know, when you're a tried here, you're always looking to give back to the community, so I think that's a big piece. And I definitely love doing stuff like that, helping to give back to the community, whether the seniors finding some volunteer work or on how we can help one another with the schools, but bringing the whole community together for different projects, so.
In the same vein, what do you believe the most important attributes that a Council on Aging Director should possess? What are the things that should absolutely come to the table with a director?
I absolutely think that a director should have flexibility, be able to listen carefully and hear what the seniors are looking for, what the community needs in general, so from a town aspect as well. I think that the director needs to, you know, have some experience, you know, with seniors. So, I definitely think that listening though, that being able to be flexible. Energy, I think that's a huge piece.
Energy is a big one.
Yeah, I think that's a big piece, so. Maybe some different ideas, tools, being creative, so.
What do you think the first couple of things you'd like to do if you were to be awarded the position? How do you see yourself starting in the position?
Really, just getting to know everybody. I think that's the big piece, getting to know, after all the seniors, getting to know the town folks and what do people see, you know, for the future. That's the big part, is really connecting with people first and then the position will, you know, yeah, I think it'll grow from there. I think I can learn the different, you know, business ends, managerial part, that's not a, you know, problem. I think really people need to get to know one another, grow from there, so.
So, I guess my questions would be, what experience do you have with budgeting, municipal budgeting?
Yeah, I've worked with a budget before. I was a conservation assistant for the Conservation Agency in Carver for three years, so I was very helpful with that budget and always going to budget meetings with the selectman as well. I definitely know that there are certain, you know, pieces that are allocated to different parts of the budget, you know, whether it's transportation is one, you know, and then, you know, staffing is another. I work with a budget currently at my place and we do the same thing, so I definitely, you know, know how to, you know, allocate different areas, whether it's entertainment and, you know, that one's all that, the staffing, and the food and payroll, I mean, I pay the whole of my staff now, so.
Are you comfortable with public speaking?
I am, yeah, I am actually, no problem.
And how about with technology and social media? How often do you use that and how do you see yourself being able to use social media to expand the outreach of the Council on Aging?
I think that's a great idea. I'm not great at it, I have to admit. I'm not a big tech savvy girl, but I'm learning and I've definitely learned in the past couple of positions that I've been in, I've had folks teach me. So, I've had to learn how to, I can do PowerPoint presentations, being able to download them into a USB drive, to be able to put them up on the TVs, so that, and just be able to let different pictures or videos or programs run through the TVs so that our seniors at my place can see them. I've had to learn different programs, like payroll programs and just the different programs for technology, so I definitely can learn it.
Okay.
I might be a little slower learner, I feel like maybe that's, I'm just not a tech savvy girl, but I try. And then social media for that aspect, that doesn't seem to be a problem. I love doing that. I think that's important for the community to see other folks engaged, so whether it's concerts and being able to, you know, post things that have gone on and the interaction of people, like have people see the connection in the town, so I think that's important.
Have you ever had to put together like a newsletter or anything like that?
Oh, sure, yeah, absolutely, no problem, yeah.
I'm sorry. No, no, that's fine, that's a good question. Goes along with the whole IT stuff.
Can you all say it, Cory?
Have you ever applied for any grants?
I have not, yeah, that's one aspect that I'm not afraid to learn, for sure. I think that that's something that I can pick up pretty easily, I have not done it.
And then, just one more. What's the number, the largest number of individuals that you've supervised in any position that you've had?
For staffing, oh boy, it really just depends. Right now, I've got five folks under me in programming, but as a manager, you oversee the whole community, you know, on, when you're managing, managers on duty, you're doing weekends, you're overseeing all the RCAs, I oversee all the kitchen staff, the housekeeping staff, you're making sure that the residents, plus I consider my volunteers part of my staff and my entertainment, so you're balancing a lot of different folks and you're, you know, keeping contracts for entertainers, you're keeping contracts in, and the orientation checklist for all your volunteers, making sure you get all the query checks, and then you're doing that with your staff and just overseeing, you know, staffing if there's any shortage and making sure that you're calling people in when needed, so. I feel like even though I've only had my direct staff as five, or that might have been the most, you do oversee lots of folks, you know.
You just touched on something I was going to bring up. You're really supervising a lot of different folks coming from a lot of different directions. You've got your paid employees, you have your volunteers, which is a whole other aspect of the operation, and you have the people you service. Are you comfortable dealing with all of those disparate types of people?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I do that currently, you know, between the staff and different things that they have going on and my residents as well and their families, to our volunteers, and that's a big piece of our puzzle. So, whether it's student volunteers or adult volunteers, anyone from the church to entertainment, I'm very good at, and I do like to make sure that I have, you know, like an orientation checklist, that they're queried, that everyone has, like I like to keep everything in place, so I have a binder for everyone, you know, like my volunteer binder, it's separated by students and church folks and whatnot, and then my entertainers, like I said, you know, you're overseeing them, making sure that they're coming when it's timely as well, but you're overseeing your contract, you're sending out contracts for them to make sure that they are approving the dates that they've agreed to with you and the price for the entertainment. So, you know, I like to be organized, but I feel like I have that in a problem, yeah.
Have you ever had to discipline an employee or someone on you?
Yeah, of course, for sure, yeah. Recently, well, not recently, I guess it was maybe a little over a year ago, we had a driver for our community had trouble kind of balancing the drop off and pickup for doctor's appointments in a timely fashion, so I had to remind him, you know, that if you're, you know, if you're short on time, like try not to rush the residents. I felt like they were, I would get a lot of feedback either from my staff as well as from the residents themselves, that he might have been short with them, that he's rushing them, so I had to remind him that, you know, they're very independent, let them do their thing, on a couple of occasions, whether it was the doctor's appointment, there was one where he would go to the appointment, walk in, say when they're going to be done, I need to know a time, I said, you need to just let them do their thing and they'll call you when they're ready for the appointment. He left, you know, a resident waiting a long time because he wasn't able to balance the drop off and pickup times of other things that were going on, so, yeah, I have had to coach him in that aspect. And one time, there was a similar incident where at CVS, he was kind of hovering over the residents to say, well, what do you need? What do you need? What do you want me to get? What can I get for you? I was just, just let them do their thing, you know, you just wait in the van, they'll be out, you know, so.
So, if, say for instance hypothetically, if he had not heard what you said to him and went through what you requested, how would you have dealt with it?
Um, well, he did it. It's funny, he didn't really hear. I mean, he was listening, but, and you could tell he was listening, but he didn't want to hear like what he was saying, you know, it was his thing, so bringing in another coworker with me to chat with him as well, and somebody who maybe could have used better terminology to explain to him, you know, we need you to call us when there's an issue, you know, if you're having time, you know, trouble getting back to somebody in a timely manner, you need to make it known, you know, so just bring somebody else in to help out with that conversation. Maybe he's not hearing what I'm saying, maybe I'm not portraying it the way I'd like to to him, you know.
You believe in progressive discipline or are you egregious?
Say again?
Progressive discipline, progressive.
To move along, like to write? Yeah, we would have to write them up, yeah, yeah, you know, we had spoke with them and then we'd have to write it down, you know, and say, okay, you know, this is what's going to happen the next time, you know, we may have to find a new position in the community for you. Maybe that's, you know, not the best spot, you know, so, or we would have to find somebody else that would be suitable for the position, so.
Have you ever had to deal with irate clients, senior citizens, someone who felt that they weren't getting the service they deserve?
Sure, yeah, you know, I mean, not to the extent when they're really upset, but for sure, you have folks that are very, that can get upset, family members as well, so you have to listen to them, you have to really hear what they're saying and meet them where they are, understand that, you know, that what they're going through right now is very upsetting and they're not happy and you understand that and they're going to do everything they can to rectify the issue, you know, apologize robustly and then have a plan in place for what we're going to do the next time, you know, we're not going to let that happen again or, you know, and get their input on, you know, what their thoughts are going forward.
Have you ever been to a town meeting?
Oh, sure, yeah, in Carver, at our, my town meeting.
That's a plus.
Yeah, yeah. Trying to get the new school going, a few reasons, yeah.
The senior center ends up being a resource for a lot of different people, not just seniors.
Sure.
Even folks in some kind of need with young families, for instance, and, you know, looking for advice, direction and that kind of thing. Have you had occasion to work with anybody other than seniors at your present position or in your affiliation with Rochester?
Um, not, well, yeah, I deal with the kids all the time from the different schools currently in my position, my families, I deal with our staff who sometimes could be younger. Before I took on the position at the Carver Conservation as the Conservation Assistant for a few years, I was the, I was a member of our Recreation Board in town for a few years, so I ran the swim program in town in Carver. I actually got it up and running. It had dropped off for a few years, my kids were little at the time, so I tried to got it right back running again, so I supervised the lifeguards for the beaches, brought them up, made sure that they had the classes that they need to, to teach swim lessons, got the swim lessons going, get back in the town, so that was pretty good, so, yeah, supervised all the folks as well.
I think I covered my budget and technology.
Yes.
Uh... Sorry about the dead air here, just to...
It's not dead, the fan's going.
The fan's going, yeah, it's covering it all up. Have you had any experience with seniors that are in the throes of different types of ailments, including dementia, or has that been something you've had experience with?
Yeah, I'm a certified dementia specialist, so that's something that I definitely have experienced with. I've worked in a nursing home years ago, the dementia floor was one of them when I was an assistant, but we, in North Attleboro, we had, we have a memory neighborhood as well as my current position, we have a memory neighborhood, so, yeah, I'm definitely used to working with people with dementia. I try to make sure that we're hitting all aspects of these years, like I've brought in different support groups for Parkinson's as well, so we have a grief support, Parkinson's support group, and dementia support group.
It's a challenge, it's a challenge working with dementia.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but they need, dementia also needs somewhere to, you know, child like really need that direction, so, yeah, maybe help.
Is there anything that would impede you from being able to take the position once you go?
Anything that would impede me from taking this position? Um, no, I don't think so, other than that I love the company I work for, I mean, I just a tough, I have Benchmark, I work for Benchmark, it's a big company, we own about sixty, our communities in the area, from Connecticut to Maine, New Hampshire, New York. It's a big company, but they moved me out to Marlboro, it's such a trip, you know, so I do like it, I love my position, I love what I do, but I'm definitely looking to grow further than just a program director. I have let them know that. I haven't seen any potential growth to be able to move in a different direction, it is such a trip, so, you know, other than I really love the company that I work for, I'm really looking forward to growing myself as a professional and moving up in my field and coming closer to home.
Has the salary arrangement described to you? Are you comfortable with that arrangement?
I tried to explain it the last time, yes, yeah.
Are you comfortable with that?
I am, I, you know, I'd like to, you know, hear what you're thinking for your figure. I would be comfortable starting like right around sixty-five, I'm hoping that that's something that you would be comfortable with as well, so, but certainly I'd love to hear what you're thinking.
That would be somewhere in mid-range, if I'm not mistaken with my recollection. The way it works here is that would have to be approved by a wage and personnel board, and if you've worked in Carver, I'm sure you've run into that in the past, so there's no guarantee of that, but that would be something that, you know, could potentially happen. If all things considered were agreeable to you, would you in fact take the position if it were offered to you?
I think I would, yes, yeah, I'd love that, yeah.
Are there any questions you need to ask of us at this time?
I just would like to know, I don't think I asked the last time, how many folks do you have assistants underneath you? It doesn't make the decision, I'm just curious, it doesn't make my decision one way or the other. I've worked with as little as two folks under me to, like I said, five currently, but, and I've worked with a lot of volunteers, so it doesn't make my decision, I'm just curious, you know, the different staff that's already in place and if they're open to a new director, you know, they're, you know, looking forward to it.
That's always a dicey question.
What kind of obstacles I'm facing getting there, you know, in that position.
I don't know that I can answer that, but...
I know I can't, but the question, I admit to ask you earlier concerning staff, how do you feel about upward movement within an organization? I mean, do you try to bring your staff along, avoid them, training, experience?
I do, if they like, if they want to grow, absolutely, I'd like to continue, yeah, to make, I think that's important, because that keeps people working together, that's a good team atmosphere, you know, teamwork, you're working together to grow, grow one another, so, sure.
All right, I don't have any further, unless you have any other questions of us?
When are you looking to fill the position? And if the position was offered to me, I just want you to know, I do need to give my employer a significant, you know, time to fill the position as well, you know, it's respectful of a manager, so, and we're a brand new community, so I'd like to give them some time, so.
How much time? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I know, I don't know, as a manager, I've always given a month as a manager, but, you know, I'm not really sure, you know, maybe two weeks is almost too short, it really just, I think I have to fill out my managers too, my, you know, I guess it might offer to me, so I'm not really sure, but I think I have to fill out, you know, my company too. I certainly don't want to leave them stranded as well, and I think that...
For myself, I'd rather hear that answer than say, I start tomorrow, you know, I find that super.
Because, yeah, and I love what I do, I do really take pride in what I've started there and I want to see the programs that I've started continue, so I'd like to make sure that the person that's coming in has, you know, has met all those appropriate people, got comfortable with the staff, not only that, but the volunteers and all the connections that I've made out there that that continues, so.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You said you make the decision by...
So, does, talk about having discussion tonight about... It may be as early as tonight or as late as next Tuesday.
Well, I would like, before we make a decision, to check the reference of the query and everything, we've changed.
Okay. Did you provide, I saw on your resume that would, references furnished upon request, did you?
I can provide that.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I can email them to Charlie, is that okay?
Yep, that would be helpful.
That would be great.
I'm just speaking for myself, the latest I would see this happening would be a week from today.
Okay.
Our next meeting is next week.
Tuesday, next week, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Safe drive home. My wife knew it was from Marlboro.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm from Carver, so I'm nice and close, but, yeah, it wasn't bad coming from Marlboro today, so.
Yeah, four ninety-five can be a bear one if you go four ninety-five.
Yeah, the roads were great today, and I was really surprised. I did give Charlie a heads up that I might be running late because I wasn't sure what that looked like, but the roads were really good, so everybody must have taken the day off because of the snow.
Yeah, exactly.
It was traffic like there normally is too. Sometimes it can take me an hour and a half to get home, so.
Yeah, I remember when four ninety-five was...
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
We will notify you, either Charlie by mail or phone.
Okay, I appreciate that, yes, thank you very much, it was really nice to meet all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening.
Hi. This is Lois. Are we going to do that?
Easy does it. My insurance doesn't cover that much.
Hello?
Evening. And as you know, we're looking for a Council on Aging Director, and I have your copy of your resume here, but why should we choose you as the new director?
To be the director?
Yes.
I think I have, I know, I have the experience that I've...
And I have your copy of your resume here, but why should we choose you as the new director?
To be the director?
Yes.
I think I have, I know, I have the experience that I acquired from the position. I think I can make an immediate positive impact over there. I have six years of experience in the human service field and six years of municipal experience, as you can see. And I think I'd be a good fit.
How do you deal with supervisory people?
What situation?
If you had, as a supervisor, if someone came to you with a problem, how do you deal with it? You have to excuse me, I'm losing my mind.
It depends on the problem, I guess. If there was some sort of conflict, I guess we'd have to find out what that is, make a plan for it, and set goals for dealing with problems like that. I guess it depends on the situation.
Can you elaborate a little bit on your experience with supervisory positions? And specifically, have you worked with seniors?
Yes, so when I worked at Northern Village, they were all seniors. They were mentally disabled seniors from age, I would say thirty-five to ninety-five. But mostly, they were older.
Yeah.
And what do you, and I'm sorry, there was a first step.
No, I was just saying, can you describe your, your role and your types of experiences?
Okay, so I was responsible for a lot of different things there. I was in charge of the program budgeting and their personal budgeting. So it was set up so that they received funding, a lot of it was private funded from their families. So they would receive funding from the business office, then they would have to sit down with me and do a budget worksheet for what their needs were. And then they would have to make that money last. So I would help them with that. And same with the program budgeting. We had, it was set up, it was a campus-type setting, so there was an administrative office with a financial office. And they would, you know, that's who you would sit with for your yearly budget. And then they would give you a allotted amount. And then we used a quick-en system to put in what our expenses and give them the reports.
Okay. Yes, sorry about the dead air. I keep apologizing for it.
Have you ever had to discipline anyone before?
Yes, I have. Certain things needed to be addressed right away. So a lot of things that went on were staffing issues, with staffing issues would maybe be if people would call out or if people were going to be late. It wasn't a setting where they could be alone. So if you're going to be, you know, you're making the person behind you not be able to leave their shift. So, things like that. We administered medications, so if someone missed their medicine, it was kind of a big deal. So it was kind of a three-strike, charade type policy. You would counsel them, try to find a remedy for it, document it, and then if it kept happening, it was grounds for them to be dismissed.
Tom? How many, how many people did you supervise at any one time?
Tops would be five. And that would be a combination of relief workers. They had one-on-ones if their families could, you know, afford it. And direct care staff.
What do you feel should be the council on aging's service priorities?
So, the services that we offer, and I think we currently do offer those services. The Meals on Wheels, I think is very important. Fuel assistance, helping with that, those, you know, important needs. And the socialization, making them not feel isolated in their homes.
Good answers. Gordon?
How do you think you can improve on the programs that we have now for connecting with seniors to make them so they're not...
So I actually visited several council on aging centers just to kind of compare, like what we have for programming, what they have for programming. And we do offer a lot of similar programings. But there were, one of the things that stuck out to me, I guess, was that it's a new thing with the memory cafes. But one of the centers offers the memory cafe, but at the same time offers counseling for family members who are dealing with Alzheimer's at the same time, so that they can be there. But then their families get support too, which I thought that was great. We don't off, I don't, I don't believe we offer, you know, like bereavement counseling, things like that. Those are things that popped up at me.
Gordon?
Sure. So have you ever applied or received any grants before in any of your positions?
So not major grants, you know. I've received several educational grants and one programming grant for, it was through Health and Wellness. It was for exercise equipment.
What would you say are the most important attributes that a council on aging director should possess? What should you bring to the table?
I think being available and listening to people, hearing what their needs are. Being obviously organized, you know, making sure that all of their needs are being met. Making sure that the staff is properly trained to meet those needs.
Speaking of staff, the council on aging really has many levels of participation. You've got your employees, you have your volunteers, which is a whole nother specific group of people. And of course, you have the people you're servicing. They're not necessarily always on the same page. Is that something you feel you'd be comfortable with? Are you all right judging, juggling all those different personality types at the same time?
I think I am. I think, you know, I'd be good with dealing with, you know, any kind of conflict, I guess. As far as the volunteers, if they were having a conflict, you would have to handle it a little bit differently because you're appreciative of that volunteering. You'd have to maybe talk to them about, and find out what the areas of, you know, agreement and disagreement are. And then maybe prioritize those conflicts and find ways to, to work on them. Say I'm important.
Do you have any specific certifications or credentials that you could bring to the table? That has to do with...
Yeah, so I am a licensed social worker for the state of Massachusetts. And I recently became certified as municipal clerk, which surprisingly wasn't as geared towards working in the clerk's office, as you may think. A lot of the things that we did there was about being a better leader, conflict resolution, time management. We did a lot with public speaking, having to go to town meeting and express your needs and why you need funding for things. So I think that helped me a lot.
That's good. Yeah, have you had to fire anyone before?
I have. Like I said before, this was a three-strikes and you had to go. So I have had to, unfortunately.
So you use progressive discipline?
Yes, so you, you know, making sure you document every time that there was an incident. And then, yes, unfortunately, that was a problem.
What is your experience with social media and how can you use that technology to improve?
So I, you know, currently use social media in the clerk's office. Just my family and my friends. I think it's important, and I think seniors are using social media more than they realize. My grandmother has iPhone, and she texts me, and I'm like, "What's up?" She's like, "Really?" But I think they use Facebook, I think they use Twitter. And then creating an email database. And maybe if the senior doesn't have email, maybe a referral number does. And they can say, "Oh, Jeff, yeah, you know, this is my council on aging." You know, just if my roommate goes to that, that would be a good tool. But I definitely, I personally use social media.
Do you believe in staff meetings?
Absolutely. Staff meetings are important. I think having everybody participate and cook their each one, especially if they're on the front line, they have the best idea.
Is it safe to say you're familiar with the building and the facilities?
Yes, I do.
Took a while to show you.
I do think too, I have a really good relationship with all the companies in town, and I think that would be a good chance to make a transition.
So what type of programs have you developed?
So I don't think I have any. I know. So another thing too to explain the setting that we did. So it was a camp space setting, and there were a lot of programs that were already there. They had a director, they had a music director, they had a swimming pool. So, but some of them have lived there for thirty years. So they didn't want to go over to drum circle, or they didn't want to participate in those things. So it was challenging because of finances, you know, coming up with things to do. What we did do, thanks, we would, one of the things that we did was like photography class. So they would read weekly and maybe budget to buy a camera. And we found a camera on Craigslist. And they would, you know, be able to learn how to do that, which they loved. We did, when this was a big, and the geocaching, we put out. But they would spend all their design, you know, they were going to put in a capsule. And they would go out on weekends and do that. So that was a good one. We did living classes, because I knew, so I could teach them that. We did cooking classes, you know, teaching them to eat healthier, because a lot of them had weight issues. Because they really loved, that was a good piece on that. Food classes, and hearing these activities was high and multifunctional, based on our abilities.
How would you deal with an irate parent or seniors' kids if they came into you and felt that you weren't giving proper service?
So if they felt that I made a mistake, and I did make a mistake, I apologize. I'm not perfect, I apologize for that. If I didn't feel like I made a mistake, I would, you know, explain the reasons for my actions. And then come to me and talk about it.
Did we cover computer skills and that type of thing? Are you, I mean, I'll make some assumptions, but...
I love technology, you know.
You familiar with the basics?
Yes, I mean...
Excel spreadsheets, word, doing a presentation, those types of things?
I spent the last two days updating the town members, so yes, I'm very...
You ever made a presentation to a town meeting?
At a town meeting, no, I have not.
A group of individuals?
Oh, yes, I do. You mean in my public speaking.
Yes.
So I am a justice of the peace, so I perform wedding ceremonies in front of crowds of people. And also, in my position now, if Barbara is unable to, I have to swear in people at ceremonies. That's what I do. I have to swear in someone.
And then there's the ever-popular town meeting.
Yes, very familiar with that.
Yes.
And I feel like, you know, as far as both the council on aging building, which I know is a hot topic. It just, one of the things that I would like to see happen would be, you know, municipal and school building has always presented it. Maybe we could, you know, work together and present it together as a, as a team. That would be a good idea.
How do you go about motivating people to get involved, such as volunteers?
So I think I would want to get a feel for that. Ask the seniors what the best method, you know, how do they get their information? I don't know if, you know, collaborating with the local home park, where a lot of our seniors are, you know, to get the word out, or even do, you know, programming with them. I don't know what they offer in the local, in Word of Mouth. I think if they're having a good time, I think it'll make a difference.
You ever have to deal with organizations, supervisory organization before?
What do you mean by that? Supervisory organization, I'm sorry?
A director's board. Versus the council on aging or something.
Oh, not really, no.
I think someone asked you earlier about writing grants.
So yes, yep. I've written a few educational grants and received them. And one, I did receive one programming, was a health and wellness grant.
Tom, Gordon? I had a question that's just kind of getting old. It's sort of a two-part question. You're familiar with salary range? Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
If you were to be offered the position, would you take it?
Yes, I would.
Okay. How much notice would you need to give your current position? I think twenty minutes is sufficient.
At least two weeks' notice is not a lot, impossible.
Okay. If you got the position, what do you think your priorities would be when you first started off in the first thirty to sixty days?
I would say, you know, figuring out my role is, making sure that I have a good grasp on what my responsibilities are, and making sure I know what the staff's responsibilities are.
What about training for your staff?
I think training is very important, to keep training. I'm all for education, and it's very important, keeping up with it, how, you know, to keep up with the current trends. Like I said, I've met with the, some of the council agents in the area to find out if they have the type of support that we have in the clerk's office, the Mass Town Clerks Association, and they do have one for the council on aging. And the town clerk in Hanson was so nice to me. She said, "Oh, if you get the position, call me," you know, and she'll let me know about those things. Executive office at Elder feels such as that, so.
And you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
You've done payroll before?
Yeah, I don't typically do it, but, you know, there has been instances when, you know, Barbara was out with illness, and I did have to do that. By a fire.
Are you comfortable with the municipal budgeting process that we have here in town? You've been around it?
Yes, I am. And I did actually ask a couple weeks ago, I asked seniority to see the budget, just to see what kind of, you know, what I was getting into before.
That's a good place to start.
Right.
You've done municipal volunteering? You've volunteered for boards or committees?
So I'm a part of the Friends of Hobbs. We did it for six years, built on that playground, which my kids were never going to use. So they, every week, they're like, "Are you going to build?" But I thought it was important for our community for that, so I'm very proud of it.
Should be, the committee did a great job.
Is there anything that would impede you from taking this position?
No.
You are familiar with the various types of programs? I think you touched on fuel assistance, that kind of thing. People needing help filling out their mass health forms.
So I actually spoke...
The Shining Organization, are you familiar with those kinds?
I spoke with the Shining Organization in Middleboro to find out how you would go about having a Shining House. So I think that would be important for me to do also. And they do meet, not until the spring, but I believe they said it was, I thought they said maybe a six-week program that you choice a week to become a Shining House owner.
I've actually gotten good at filling out those forms.
Yeah. It's not easy.
Do you have any questions of us?
I don't think I do. Can't think of anything.
Just one last question. Why did you apply?
For the job?
Yeah.
So when I saw the job, I'm ready to make, not a change, but I'm ready to move forward in my career. I really want to stay in Hillview, because I've lived here my whole life. And when I saw the job description, I was like, "Oh, I get that. Oh, I can do that." You know, it really just, I miss working with people. It's not as rewarding being in the clerk's office as far as the interaction. Most people that come in the town hall aren't too happy to see me, you know. I just miss being able to help people.
So you deal well with irate people?
I do, very well.
You're in the right place. Okay. Do you have any issue with us contacting your references?
No. I did notice that on the application, there was no spot, yeah, phone numbers.
Well, I'm sorry, your references, I don't think that's going to be too big of a problem.
Oh, right, sorry.
Okay. Any other questions of us?
No.
I think I'm good. Go ahead. There was one more.
Of course there is.
There's always one.
What adjectives will we most hear when we call you references?
I would think that is a tough one. I would think reliable, responsible. Ooh, this is a tough one. My referencing.
Was that two good ones?
Yeah.
I know. I can't think of many things to know what they would say, I'm not sure.
Well, we could ask them.
Are you comfortable with the work time, the schedule?
Yes. It's an extra day.
Yes.
They need you, they just don't want you around as much.
Correct.
Well, I don't have any more questions to ask at this time.
I think you covered it all.
So the, just the, I don't believe we're going to make a decision tonight because we're going to call and call the references and come back. And we just told Charlie at seven fifteen next Tuesday, we want a discussion.
Okay.
So you should get a phone call after.
After that, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out on such a miserable night.
I don't think there's anything else on our agenda, huh?
I would move that next Tuesday, we meet at early at seven fifteen to discuss the two requests. Hopefully all the references will be checked by that time. And then you should talk about it and make a decision at that time, final decision. One second, Bill.
I'm good with that. Always in full. All right.
Thanks, Dan.
Want you to adjourn?
Good night, everybody. Be careful with the snowstorm.
Aye, favor?
I'm in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Everybody.